Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Law. I am the FinCom Chair and I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. I do need a mic. Try that again. Round two. My name's John Law. I am the FinCom Chair and I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, November 5th at 7:00. Before we get started, I'd like to have all the members introduce themselves, starting off to my far left.
Brett Housler.
Heidi Gilmore.
Joyce Boyardi.
Michael Crone.
Jen.
Ooh, good call.
Oh, alright, I guess we have to start from there.
Yeah. Thank you, whoever said, I'm still muted. Alright.
Third time.
Third time's a charm. Let's start, this is a good rehearsal time for everybody here. It's been a little bit of a while. So anyway, my name is John Law. I am the FinCom Chair and I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, just a couple minutes after. Before we get started, though, I'd like to have all the members introduce themselves, starting off to my far left.
Brett Housler.
Heidi Gilmore.
Joyce Boyardi.
Michael Crone.
Jen Zarotsky.
Eric Marthenson.
Perfect. Excellent. Thank you, Mark. Pete Perube had another commitment tonight, so he will not be here. Mike Crone will be reading his articles tonight to facilitate the pre-town meeting. So, what we're gonna do tonight is follow the agenda, but also call the pre-town meeting, open it. And that is where we go. I'm gonna take a few minutes just to explain this because we have some new members on the committee. But that is, it's basically like a dry rehearsal for the town meeting, and, but it's also a time for when residents get the Finance Committee report to come in, talk to the Finance Committee about the different articles, and ask us further questions if there are any questions. And we can answer them and have discussions. We've already voted on these articles, so we're not going to be voting again. I did check with the town administrator. There's no change in the language from the time that we read through these on October 15th, I believe, because it was a draft warrant at the time, instead of a final warrant at the time. The only change is Article 11 is now number three, and Article 3 is now number 11. So those are the major changes. So, so all that makes sense as we start off here? The process that we'll go through for pre-town meeting here is, I'll call on the article, who's responsible for the article, and if you have the motions document up, you're going to read through the motion, not the article. And that is true at town meeting as well. Okay?
You don't wanna read the article, but the motion, the article explains to everybody here what it is.
No, we don't read it.
Yeah, no, we don't.
No.
But, so we'll read through the motions, and then through discussion, you can, we're going to have discussion around it. And we can discuss the article then, though. And also, you can include some supporting points as well regarding your article. You know, I'd say we're not gonna do a deep, deep dive unless we need to, but since we've already talked about all these articles, it's just a general discussion, overview, and the supporting points behind why we voted the way we did, and the supporting points behind the article. So after you read the motion, you're gonna read, if it's a majority vote, two-thirds vote, and then what the vote tally was. All these were eight to zero, so it's gonna be pretty straightforward. Any questions on the process at all, before we get going? Okay. With that said, why don't we start off with Article 1, which is Pete Perube's article, but Mike, why don't you start us off?
The FinCom will move at town meeting to vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,752.11, transfer the sum of $9.87 from sewer enterprise reserves, and transfer the sum of $4,167.38 from water enterprise reserves, for a total sum of $19,929.36 for unpaid bills from prior fiscal year as written in the warrant. This requires a four-fifths vote.
Yeah, discussion. Go ahead, Mike.
This is typical of a warrant article presented both at spring and fall town meetings. It votes to approve invoices from the prior fiscal years that were unable to be paid at that time. The total bills at this time are $19,929.36.
Any further discussion? No further discussion. Let's move on to Article number two. Sorry, I'm a little discombobulated here. Go ahead, Mark.
If you'd like me to over-read through?
Yes, please do. You can read the motion and read it exactly as it's written, please.
Sure. I move that the town vote to transfer from marijuana impact fees free cash, the sum of $99,155, and for free cash, the sum of $348,075, for a total sum of $447,230, for additional wages and expenses not sufficiently funded under Article 3, operating budgets of the May fifth, 2025 annual town meeting, as written in the warrant. Administration, social work services, entire community, $17,500. Police, school resource officer salary, $64,321. School, school adjustment counselor, one FTE, $17,334. Tri-county, tri-county debt assessment, $348,075. Total fiscal year, 2026, balance of $447,230. So required a majority vote. This has been unanimously approved by Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mark. Open it up for discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
This article authorizes the transfer of funds in the amount of $99,155 for marijuana impact fees, and $348,075 for free cash to pay for the wages and expenses that were planned to be supported by such funds.
Perfect. Thank you. Any further discussion? This is, we talked about this at our last meeting, how the marijuana impact fees are slowly fading, and I believe this is the last payment. Last payment, is that right, Jody?
It's the last payment of funds received. We have one more round of spending.
Last payment of funds received, one more round of spending. Thank you. Any further thoughts or questions? No. Okay. Article 3, which actually, let's see here.
Mine.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
That is mine.
Yeah.
Article, well, no, just Article 3.
Article 3, the leaf blowing?
Yeah, that's changed. Article 3 and 11 changed.
No, I'm a lot, I'm now 11.
Yeah, so the leaf blower.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yep, yep. All good. Yep. Go ahead, Heidi.
Okay.
Yep.
So I will move that the town vote to amend.
You need to speak into a microphone.
Alright, thank you. I will move that the town vote to amend Article 8 of the general bylaws by adding a new Section 51 in the commercial gas-powered leaf blower noise as written in the warrant. This was submitted by the Select Board. We need a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article, and the Finance Committee passed this by a vote of eight to zero.
Great. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
This article would place limitations on the days of the week and hours within which gas-powered leaf blowing equipment can be used. This is consistent with bylaw changes many other Commonwealth towns have enacted to ensure less noise pollution for residents, as well as less air pollution from emissions of gas-powered equipment.
Fantastic. Any other further thoughts or questions? All good. Thank you, Heidi. Moving on to Article number four.
I'd actually ask a question about process.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just wanna make sure, my understanding is that the Finance Committee recommends approval of X, based on all of our approvals, comes during the discussion rather than during the presentation of the motion?
I think you can simply say Finance Committee recommends.
At what point? During presentation of the motion?
No, at the end.
At the end of the discussion.
You read your motion.
So I was too soon.
Majority vote, and then say Finance Committee approves this nine to zero, or eight to zero. Is that what you're saying?
No. So you're gonna say, I move that, and then you fill in the blank?
Yep.
Is there any discussion? Yes, there's discussion. Here's my discussion. At the end, that's when you say the Finance Committee recommends approval.
Yes. And then you.
No, so.
Yeah, this is how you do it. I move, then it's the discussion, the Finance Committee recommends this article, eight to zip, submitted by the Select Board, must be passed by majority vote. This is what we've been doing for seven years.
I've heard it now a couple of times tonight, so I just wanna clarify, so there is uniformity.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we should be doing the motions. I think we should be doing the article and then indicating that we voted in favor of it, but that's a recollection.
Yeah, so I watched the last four pre-town meetings, yeah. So, yeah, so it's, so, I'm sorry.
So normally what happens is, the moderator would say Article 5, and then I would say, Mr. Moderator, he'd give my name, and then I would explain what, I would tell what the motion is.
Yeah.
Then he would ask if there was any discussion. I would then in turn give the discussion, and then any further discussion, and then I would say the Finance Committee recommended this article by eight to zero, then submitted, who submitted it, and how it has to pass.
That's fine. Do it, do it this way. I was doing it informally the other way, where I did all three points and then discussion. So, great point, let's do it the town, town meeting way. So, who's up?
It's not the Joyce or the Chongway?
No, it's the town.
No, it's the town.
Which one's which?
So, so, so what we'll do, so after you read through it.
So read the motion as written.
Yes.
Alright.
Then the moderator will ask for discussion. That's when it goes back to the person presenting the motion. You, that's when you discuss what you've written about the program.
No, yeah.
And then, then you say the Finance Committee recommended this article by eight to zero.
That's what we just did, okay.
Yeah. No, she, you did it, she did not.
It's been multiple ways tonight, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Correct. I'm gonna double-check it, because I'm 99% sure I've been doing it at town meeting the other way. But I don't, does anyone have any, anything to weigh in on? Sorry, sorry to be.
Through the years, it's been this way.
I understand.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Best of my knowledge, the Finance Committee members have presented the article.
Yeah.
Made the motion, and they've either mentioned the vote of the recommendation vote on the Finance Committee right after that, or they discuss the background of the article and then, then give the recommended, the vote of the Finance Committee. But it's definitely the recommended vote of the Finance Committee is given before it's opened up to the public for any discussion.
Correct, correct. Understood. Okay, so I'm fine with that.
You know, I've kinda, I think I've heard it both ways, either right after the initial motion.
Yeah.
Or right after the discussion.
Yeah.
It's definitely before the Finance Committee gives up its speaking role at the beginning.
Totally agree, totally agree. So for tonight and for town meeting, why don't we do discussion, back to the moderator or chair, and then, I'm sorry, read, read the motion, go back to the chair, the moderator, and then go back to the discussion, and then say the majority vote, two-thirds vote, and then.
Who submitted it?
Yeah. You have to say, you could just say, no, it's just the vote. You don't have to say who submitted it.
No, because then we have to say to them.
We don't have to say who submitted it. Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay.
But we'll verify. Thank you. Okay. Set?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
This is our first round?
I know, right. That's a good, that's good questions, good questions, good questions. Alright. Number four. Go ahead, Mike. This is Pete's article.
I moved that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $500,000 for road, sidewalk construction, design, repair, and maintenance. This requires a majority vote.
Okay. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In recent years, the Select Board and Town Meeting have voted in favor of supplementing road and sidewalk improvements by appropriating funds in addition to Chapter 90 funds provided by the state, and limited, and approximately $272,000 received in FY 25. There will be anticipated paving in terms of work done on Exchange Street, Village Street, Pleasant Street, and other streets as deemed appropriate by the Department of Public Works. The FinCom voted unanimously in favor of recommending this warrant article.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay. Article 5, Joyce.
Okay. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $100,000 for tree pruning and removal. This requires a majority vote.
Okay, discussion?
The DPW has appropriated $25,000 a year from the general fund to remove dead branches and/or trees on town property that poses a hazard to the community. This is a service that must be contracted work at a prevailing wage under the state contract. With the overwhelming need for branch tree removal, an additional $100,000 K is being asked for to provide safety to the community. If approved this article, if we approved, if approved, this article would allow the town to move forward with the removal of trees and branches on the town, branches the town's tree warden deems unsafe. The Finance Committee recommends this article, eight to zero. This was submitted by the Select Board.
Any further discussion? No? Okay. Article 6, that's me. Article 6. I move that the Town of Milis appropriate the amount of $125 million, which includes the $1,300,000 that was already appropriated for feasibility study and schematic design, for the purpose of paying cost to design, construct, and furnish the addition and renovation of the Milis Middle High School located at 245 Plain Street. Scope of project includes the construction of a new academic wing and renovation of the existing academic spaces and common spaces. Inclusive of all buildings and mechanical systems, along with associated site work, improvements, and including the payments of all costs incidental or related thereto the project, which school facility shall have and anticipate a useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren for at least 50 years, and for which the Town of Milis may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. Said amount to be expended under the direction of the Milis School Building Committee to meet the appropriation, the treasurer, and the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under MGL Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to use construction manager at risk delivery method. The Town of Milis acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement, just, excuse me, discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any project costs the Town of Milis incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility to the Town of Milis, provided further that any grant that the Town of Milis may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of, one, 59.08% or eligible approved project cost as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon the affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the repayment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on tax imposed by MGL 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 and 1/2, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to the vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the Town of Milis and the MSBA. This requires a two-thirds vote. Discussion. I'll start off. So, hopefully everybody has had a chance to read the Finance Committee report and the letter that was written for that. Just to make an update here, going from the MSBA letter, that were approved for the $66,515,343. However, it does go up to the max, which is $68,256,981, which is 54.61%. I just wanted to provide some exact details around that because some of the numbers are rounded, both in the FinCom letter, but just also circling around in conversation. This is a needed renovation addition, based on where we are as a town, based on our facilities and the school. It's been, since 1960 since that school was built, late 90s since there was an addition. This has started over two years ago regarding applying for a feasibility study, and if MSBA would allow Milis to apply, but also be selected in the process. That has gone through. We are at that stage now. This letter approves it. This letter was, the MSBA sent the letter on October 29th, so we're dealing with the real numbers now. I think the, a couple things here. One is that, do we need a new school? The short answer is yes. Are taxes gonna go up because of it? Absolutely. And that to the tune of $914, based on a $605,000 house in Milis. Looking at the different options, and what the School Building Committee has gone through, evaluating those different options, not only is this the best option for Milis, but it's also the cheapest option for Milis. So if this option is not selected or does not pass, then the do-nothing approach would occur, and the repairs would have to be updated over time, over a 10-year period or so, and it would be about $20 million more than the current price of the option that was selected for this right now. That's a summary of where we are. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I would like to make two additional points. One is that the cost of this project will never be cheaper, and the participation by the state will never be higher. If we lose this, this time, then, and we have to rebuild it in the future, it'll cost more, and we'll probably never get this type of contribution. Second of all, everyone should understand that when the MSBA.
MSBA.
MSBA, excuse me, authorizes, that we will, I should say, commits to this dollar figure, that they're gonna contribute, that that cannot be withdrawn, that that cannot be changed by the state government, by the governor, by any federal authority. It's committed, and it will go to us once it's committed by the MSBA. So, just so people understand that, it's not gonna be subject to the whims of the state legislature, or the governor, or anyone else in the Commonwealth.
Go ahead, Joyce.
The other thing is, you know, I was fortunate enough to have gone to the Council on Aging today, where there was an excellent presentation by the planning, the, oh, gosh.
Select Board?
The Select Board, as well as the committee, the Vertex, and I'm trying to, and the Planning Board, Chair, Chair of the Planning Board, I've, his name has escaped me. It was done extremely well, and one of the, a few of the things that really impressed me was the fact that the amount that they've committed to, the, there is a ceiling. It will not exceed. They have guaranteed that it will not exceed the full amount that is presented. I don't wanna speak wrong of that total amount. Is it 127 million?
125, which includes the feasibility study from two years ago.
Right. And it also, they, they have also, it will not go over that amount, and they have put a contingency amount, so to protect us, so that if, if there's anything that comes up, they've buffered it, so it actually could come in lower. The other thing is, if you're interested in finding out how much it would cost you, which I found very interesting because I immediately looked up my assessed value of my home, and did the quick calculation, and then I knew what it was gonna cost me. It's a $1.51 per $1,000 assessed value, not what you can sell it for, but the assessed value. So if yours, if your home is assessed at, say, 500,000, multiply it by that 1.51, and you're gonna get what your tax will be for that year. It's a 28-year commitment, and then it goes away. It's not like regular overrides where it continues and continues and continues. So there is an end point. And the fact that we're putting, if we, if this does not go through, putting Band-Aids on a school that needs, that doesn't meet certain criteria is foolish, especially when it's gonna cost us more, and we would end up with an, still an old school that was built, I believe, in, was it?
1960.
60?
Yep.
1960. It, they've truly thought out the process of this, the cost. They've done everything. We actually are getting more than a lot of the other towns around us in percentage from the state, and that's because the planning, the building committee were so due diligent in getting the costs down, and the, and the, the amount that the state was going to fund. So if you think anybody hasn't done their job, they have done a crack, a wonderful job getting this done. And I, I, I am on a fixed income, but I would be foolish not to vote for this, because I don't wanna pay more money down the road and put Band-Aids on the, on, on the building.
Thank you for those comments, Joyce. Very.
You're welcome.
Very good. Couple of add-ons, if no one else needs to, if anyone needs to speak up. Just a reminder that this is, at town meeting, is the appropriation of funds to go towards the school, and then on December 8th is the actual ballot of voting to increase the taxes to pay for this. On another smaller note, just as I'm consolidating my thoughts before town meeting, is, you know, when you look at the Chapter 60 funds, those have gone up less than 1% each year going forward, and to get this type of a, a gift, in a sense, a grant, from the state of $68 million, up to $68 million, it's a good deal. And I think we should realize that. There are economic constraints, there's no question. Taxes impact everybody, both young, old, and everybody in between, and of all different demographics. But this is good for the town, and it's great for the kids, and it's great for an investment for the future of this town. Go ahead.
I would like to say one more thing. There is a program for senior citizens in this town that meet certain criteria, circuit breaker criteria, that will, if they apply, I don't know all the parameters, you can find out. I know that it's a certain amount of money that you make, you can't, it's a $1.25 million. If your home exceeds that, you've had to live here for 10 years, you have to be 65 years or older. There, if you meet certain circuit breaker criteres, you can apply for the, for tax exemption from the building. It isn't all your taxes, but it's a tax exemption, and it's available for senior citizens. So if you're, if you're on a, if you're concerned about it, you can look, look, talk to the Treasury Department, talk to, you can find out more information. I'm sure Craig could tell us who to contact or further.
There's eight different programs of different qualifying variables for each program.
Right.
The best thing to do is to go online, and all the programs are stipulated with all the qualifications.
Okay.
Yeah. Go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, I would just say there, there, don't contact the Treasury Department yet. This only kicks in.
A little closer to Mike.
This only kicks in.
Yeah, I know.
This only kicks in after there's a tax increase, but it has been passed by the town. It is sitting in front of the legislature. I think the only thing everybody in the state agrees on is the legislature moves slowly. But they do move, it's before them, and we expect it to be approved any time now.
Thank you.
But there's nothing to abate at this point, because there is no tax to abate, so.
Right.
Correct.
The other piece I want to point out, is it goes to what Mike had said, about this being the best time. The reimbursement from the state is graduated. A wealthy community, my son was working at a school in Brookline that's in this program, the most they can get from the state is 30%. The state won't give them more than 30, maybe 35, but it's 30 or 35% is the most they'll get. Lynn gets 80%. Milis is at 59 point something as our maximum, and we're getting, let's see my notes, 54.6. So we're right at the top. Most towns are 15% below their top, by the way. In six, in five or six years, if this doesn't pass, and we go back to the state, our socioeconomic status is improving in this town. We're moving up. The house values are increasing, the average residence income is increasing. That 59% maximum that we have today could easily become 50, 48. It could drop over the next seven or eight years, and that's gonna just reduce how much we get. So as Mike said, this is the best it's ever gonna get. Construction costs don't get cheaper, they go up. We've got escalators for the, just for this project. We've got escalators from the day it passes on the vote to the day we actually finish the project. It's three something percent per year, just broke on construction stuff for the project. So, again, if people think we can wait, because a lot of people are saying the SNAP, the SNAP has been cut, yeah, SNAP's been cut, economic problems across the country, no government budget. budget. If when this tax kicks in in three years, we haven't funded SNAP and the government doesn't have a budget, there's far deeper problems than we're talking about. I'm confident that those won't be the same issues. I'm sure there'll be issues because there's never a good time to raise taxes. But right now, those are today issues. This tax increases two to three years out, at least.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, thanks for adding that. Any other thoughts? I think we're good. All right. Moving on to Article 7. Go ahead, Eric.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash.
I'm sorry, Eric, I'm trying to interrupt. Did you folks have any questions?
No, we already have what we needed here.
You got, okay, you got everything you needed?
Yeah.
Okay. If you have any questions, let us know, though.
I checked, I have one question.
Yeah, please, please come up to the microphone if you don't mind.
Was it explained well enough for?
I had a question for what Craig just said.
Yeah, go ahead. And just identify your name and address.
Wallace Street.
Yep.
Craig, did you say that the taxes wouldn't go up right away?
In about two years.
For this?
The construction, the construction has to start, and then the tax will be implemented.
Okay, so this is two years out.
Exactly right.
There may be incremental.
Correct.
But it's all incremental, but the big bonding is, is when the project is done.
Yeah. Great question.
Thank you.
Glad you stayed. Have a good night. Eric, I apologize. Please, please start from the top again.
It's nice to have an audience to interact with.
I know.
Interrupt any time. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $140,404. And transfer, and transfer from sewer enterprise reserves, the sum of $22,592. And transfer from water enterprise reserves, the sum of $22,592. And transfer from stormwater enterprise reserves, the sum of $22,592. For a total sum of $208,000, $208, $180,000 to fund the follow capital items. For the fire department, gas meters, $30,410. For the planning board, general code software, $16,500. For the DPW, downtown light poles, $70,900. And also for the DPW, a Chevy 3500 dump truck with plow at a cost of $90,370. For a total of $208,180,000.
What kind of votes needed for this?
What's that?
What kind of a vote is needed for this?
Oh, sorry. This requires a majority vote.
Okay, discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, these four items, I'd like to address in turn. So, the first item, the gas meters for the fire department, these are not gas meters that would record utility utilization. These are safety devices that are worn on the, on the firefighter as they enter buildings to detect hazardous level of gases. The existing gas meters are at the end of their life and they require replacement. This item is also a fallback. There is a state earmark for the $30,410. If that money is released by the state in time, then we will use that, and the money that we're allocating here will return to the town to be allocated to other items. The planning software, the general code software for the planning department will allow us to digitize some of our key documents. It also includes a fair amount of professional services for looking over them and reviewing them with subject matter experts, and also indemnifying the town if there is an error in those documents. The downtown light poles for the DPW, we would be purchasing 10 down, 10 light poles, and these are the, I don't want to say the fancier light poles, but these are the more distinctive light poles that we have in downtown that have been damaged over the years, primarily due to vehicles striking them, but also snow removal and just age. So, we will be using seven of these for replacements and keeping three in store for future need. And lastly, the Chevy 3500 dump truck for the DPW. This dump truck is currently two years past its expected replacement date. It's very high on mileage and it has hit the point where the cost of maintenance is, is pushing us towards replacing it.
Yep.
All these items were vetted by the Capital Planning Committee, and all were deemed worthy. This, this article was approved by unanimous vote.
By who?
By the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Any, correct?
I'd say eight to zero.
You didn't say eight to zero. Did you say nine?
No.
Eight to zero. Yes, that counts.
It's unanimous.
It's unanimous.
I know.
It's people who were here.
Okay, sorry.
Any other discussion?
I apologize.
I thought I was making it easier.
You're good. All good? All right, Article 8.
Article 8.
Article 8, Eric.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 from the community, from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund for the design of a universally accessible trail in the public portion of the Glenn Project. This requires a majority vote.
Yes.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
What's that? I don't know. Go ahead.
Is it me?
Could be.
Sounds more like a clanking.
I don't hear anything. Sorry, folks, if you're tuning in, we're just trying to identify some...
It's the voices.
Yeah, exactly. Continue the discussion. Go ahead.
Okay. So, this project is for the design phase only, for upgrading some of the public trails that run behind the Glenn Allen Project. Some of these improvements will include widening the trails, adding a bridge to make them accessible to, to make them ADA compliant, to make them more accessible. This represents kind of a unique opportunity for our town. When the Glenn Allen Project was created, there was a permanent residential, permanent recreational easement created for these trails. So, the town has access to these in perpetuity. But the maintenance of these trails will be done by the Glenn Allen ground staff, or whoever maintains Glenn Allen, not the town. These improvements are part of the opens, were recommended in the Open Space and Recreation Plan that was created for the town, and would be a benefit to Millis residents and a potential draw to those that are outside of the town. This, this, this article was approved by majority vote by the Finance Committee.
Perfect, eight to zero, right?
Eight to zero.
Sounds good. Any other further thoughts or questions? No? All right. Article 9, Mark, if you are still in Zoomland.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move that the town vote to amend Article 6, Section 2 of the General Bylaws as written in this warrant. This will require a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this Article 8 to 0.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This article, if approved, would amend the general bylaws to align with current Massachusetts 憲章 law 30B. The thresholds within this general bylaw were last updated in 2014 and do not currently represent the increasing cost of goods and services over the last decade.
Sounds good. Any other thoughts or comments? No discussion? All right. Thank you, Mark. Mike, Article 10.
I move that the town vote to amend Article 11, Section 2 of the General Bylaws as written in the warrant. This requires a majority vote.
Discussion?
Discussion on this, the article seeks to bring fines which the town may enforce against an owner of a dog that violates the provisions of Article 11, Section 2 of the Millis bylaws, in line with state mandated minimum fines for such violations. This was voted unanimously eight to zero by the Finance Committee.
Perfect, and we had Aaron come in as well. Questions?
Nope. I was just going to say, this doesn't represent anti-dog legislation, we're just bringing our numbers in line with the state.
Right. The violations do not change, the dollar figure associated with the violation is the only thing that changed.
Exactly.
Yep. Okay, no more further discussion. Article 11, Joyce?
Thank you, sir. I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of town-owned property identified as 33-013-00, Book 4405, Page 0585, as recorded with the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds, from the Select Board for General Municipal Purposes to the Select Board for Disposition. This requires a two-thirds vote.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. The town voted at the 2025 Spring Town Meeting to sell or auction off parcels that the town deemed not to have any potential use for the town. This is an additional parcel of land that the town has determined to not have any further potential use for the town. Parcels that have been so identified should be declared as surplus and should be disposed of whenever possible in order to put this property back on the tax roll, usually purchased by abudders who would like to expand the size of their property. If this article is approved, the parcel will be put up for sale or auction in accordance to state law to get the widest net. The Finance Committee recommends that this Article 8, 4, 0 against. This article was submitted by the Select Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All good. Okay, moving on to Article 12, Jen?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Millis zoning bylaw, Section 3C, Establishment of Zoning District Zoning Map, in order to amend the Town of Millis zoning map accordingly as shown in the warrant, to be in compliance with the update at 2025 FEMA flood insurance rate maps or forms. This requires a two-thirds vote.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This article amends the Town of Millis zoning map to incorporate the map. It does not happen automatically, so we need to vote it in. If we do not amend the bylaws to incorporate the FEMA flood insurance rate maps, it can impact town citizens' ability to get mortgages, insurances, and insurance and the like. The Finance Committee recommended a yes vote for this, eight to zero.
Thank you. Any discussion? All good? All right. Moving on to Article 13, Heidi.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the town vote to amend the Millis zoning bylaws as most recently amended by amending Section 5 Use Regulations H with respect to accessory dwelling units as written in the warrant. This requires a majority vote.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
ADUs were sanctioned by law by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts last year. Millis residents approved an amendment to our town bylaws to allow ADUs at the May 5th, 2025 town meeting. However, the State Attorney General's Office subsequently provided feedback that our bylaw amendments were too restrictive. The state views ADUs as helping to provide more housing options, promote affordable housing, and give homeowners more flexibility in using their properties. The proposed amendments in this article incorporate language provided by the State Attorney General and bring Millis into alignment with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts state law. This was submitted by the Planning Board. The Finance Committee recommends a yes vote, and the Finance Committee voted on this eight to zero.
Thank you, Heidi. Any further discussion? Town Administrator, Mike Kaczynski, I have a question, actually. How many ADUs do we have going right now in Millis?
Three. I know.
Oh.
Mr. Chair, I'd have to check with the Building Commissioner.
Yeah.
Because I'm perfectly sure to give you an exact number, but I think there are maybe three or four.
Three, yeah.
But that can change further day.
Okay.
But I wouldn't be surprised if that number grew drastically over the next six months to a year. It is, it is heating up across the Commonwealth.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to stray off point here, but have the logistics been mapped out in terms of like sewer, water, electrical, mail, all the logistics that go into adding an ADU to a property?
Yeah, they will, they will have to be worked out as part of each ADU that goes into place.
Yeah.
And if they, if, yeah, there will be certain changes needed for that, so there'll be those requirements. If an ADU is, is built next to a current house that's connected to the town's system, there are processes for that. And if, if an ADU is connected to a home on a private septic system, that septic system has to be rated for those additional bedrooms.
Yeah.
So, they may need to do changes to that septic system. So, there are, there are pieces to that. But, yeah, we have been working with the Building Commissioner and looking at what's needed for the, and, you know, as well as the DPW Director insofar as utilities and what's needed there.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
The building, the, in the statute, it says that the new construction has to meet current building code for that community. So, all of those things would be taken into consideration, I believe, within the building code itself.
Right. All safety and health issues have to be met, that hasn't changed. It really just a matter of setbacks and certain restrictions that were in place have been loosened in order to enable ADUs to go into place easier.
Yeah. Thank you for the additional information. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Nope? Okay. Moving on to Article 14, Jen?
Yep. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $59,000 to fund a state required total asset valuation recertification for the Town of Millis. This requires a majority vote.
Discussion?
Yep, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Take your time.
Oh, there's my notes. I will be better organized than this.
Yeah, you're good.
I can't do any worse than when I lost one. I don't remember that.
It's on YouTube, you can, you can...
All right, well, I have my stuff.
There's like a million hits on it right now.
Okay. So, basically...
All right, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Sorry, Jen, go ahead.
So, this article appropriates funding basically for a every-five-year required audit for the state to check that the town assessor is performing our assessments appropriately. It does not necessarily mean your valuation will go up, it does not mean it will go down, it just is a check on whether they're doing it properly. I think we had a question as to why it was only $59,000. That's because this person is not going from door to door checking out all the properties, they are actually checking out the town assessor and their operations.
That's not true.
No? That's what I was told.
No. They are going to do door to door. They will do an assessment of every property in the town.
That's not, really, okay, that's not what Terry told me. So, maybe we should, I'll double check.
Yeah, just double check.
Yeah, I mean, I was in the Board of Assessors for 25 years, we did it, but if they're doing something different, that's news to me. You don't need $59,000 bucks for that, but usually they go and they look at every building in the town to revalue it every five years now.
I'll double check with her, but that's not the way I understood it, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jen. Brett, you've been waiting, over there, thank you. Article 15, Brett.
I'm expecting an empty, empty room next week.
Not at all. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $8,200 to fund an actuarial study of the OPEB trust fund account. This article requires a majority vote to pass.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, which primarily covers healthcare for retired town employees. State law requires this study every two years to calculate how much the town will owe for retiree benefits in the future. This helps the town plan responsibly and budget appropriately for these long-term obligations. The study also informs the town's auditors what our total OPEB liability is so that the liability can be accurately reflected on our balance sheet. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this Article 8 to 0.
Thank you. Discussion? Pretty straightforward. All right, last article, Article 16, go ahead, Brett.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 to the OPEB
dollars to the OPEB trust fund account. This article requires a majority vote to pass.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, primarily healthcare coverage for retired town employees. This, I can choose to strike that. Um, this proposed transfer is the town's annual contribution to the OPEB trust fund, helping contribute to our long-term obligation for retiree health benefits. Consistent annual funding, especially when we increase contributions like we're doing this year, demonstrates sound financial management and improves our bond rating for when the town needs to borrow. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article, eight to zero.
Thank you, Brett. Any further discussion on Article sixteen? None. If we are good, I am going, going to conclude and close our pre-town meeting. I appreciate everyone's effort on all that. Um, and following the agenda, we will go into the, um, uh, the presentation from the Association of Town Finance Committee Annual Meeting Overview. So this was, uh, when, actually, all four of you went, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, who do I turn it over to?
So I'm gonna be running our slide deck.
Okay, just speaking to the mic. Thanks, Jody.
So I'll be running slides, uh, that all four of us have collaborated on. And what we've done is we've taken parts of the conference. So each one of us will present a certain session from that day. And, um, Eric will start us off, then it'll go to Mark, then Brett, and then I'll wrap up.
Great.
So Eric, over to you, and just tell me when you want to advance the slides.
Sure, sure. So it was a pretty good way to spend a Saturday.
[laughing]
No, I'm not being facetious. There was actually some good information. Some was dry, but overall, it was worth it. Um, the day started with two open sessions where everyone in the room was listening to the same thing, and I'll talk about those in just a minute. And then it broke off into two workshop sessions. Uh, we attended all but one of them. Uh, in the first workshop session, it was Budgeting One-O-One, so that was like great for new Finance Committee members, so we all went to that. And then in the second workshop, um, Mark went to the one on a tale of two or three overrides, and then the rest of us went to the Revenue and Expenditure Forecasting. Uh, so I'll talk a little bit about the first two open sessions that we had. Um, so this first one, this was a report that was put together by the MMA. Uh, they were really, they were, they were looking at Prop two-point-five and trying to look at, um, how appropriate it was. You know, was it working? What's its efficacy? And this report is being broken up into two parts. So the part they presented when we were there was their findings. We were very excited about the next part, which is their recommendations. Um, but the point that they made, which I thought was interesting, was they talked a lot about the financial pressure that towns are under. Um, with, you know, disappearing federal aid, um, Massachusetts is actually pretty stingy when it comes to state aid. You know, we are thirty-eighth in the amount of state aid that we provide, well below the average. Um, and we have very few options for raising additional money. You know, local sales tax, income tax, stuff like that are prohibited. Other things are very limited. Um, you know, meal taxes, stuff like that. Um, so there really aren't a lot of opportunities to raise taxes beyond that two-and-a-half percent per year. Um, and of course, things are, tend to get more expensive than two-and-a-half percent per year. Um, operational overrides are not really a long-term strategy. They don't, they don't scale very well. And one of the things that I found was surprising was how many towns haven't even tried to do it. Um, I think less than half of the Massachusetts towns have passed overrides. The, um, and in this financial pressure, it's actually the rural and the city municipalities that get hit the hardest, um, which I thought was interesting. Uh, Melis were kind of in the middle, um, but were certainly not insulated from it. Um, and then the last part of their findings was that, was that UGA, UGGA, Unrestricted General Government Aid, um, is something that we all need, but it's fallen by twenty-five percent since two thousand two. And those are basically state funds that flow into the town for general use. Um, next slide, please. So the questions that we were left when we left there, first off was, you know, what are the recommendations that this report makes? Um, we should know in December. That's when they're planning to release the second half of this. Um, and then what are these recommendations can we pursue at the town level? Uh, or will they all, or, or will all these be recommendations that, at the state level? I'm hoping there's something we can do from the town, but, uh, my suspicion is it's gonna be, um, contact your representative.
Probably.
Probably. Okay, and then the next session, the next session was, 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 uh, was very interesting as well. So it was presented by Quentin Palfrey from the Federal Funds and Infrastructure Office, which is an office that I did not know existed. It's, uh, the FFIO. It was established in two thousand twenty-three by executive order. Uh, and it's a Massachusetts office, and they really help the town. Their mission is to help towns, uh, get federal funding. So they track the opportunities. Uh, they also are tracking the loss of opportunities as the federal government is pulling back on providing funding. They support towns in their application for federal funds. And, uh, interestingly, they have a matching funds program. So they have seven hundred and fifty million dollars that's been allocated to them. So, um, they can actually match federal contributions to increase the amount of fundings, of funding that we get. Um, so it's a good office to be aware of and one that I hope to dig into a little bit more. Uh, one thing that they tease that's really interesting is this software application called GrantWell, which is sort of like ChatGPT for grant writing. So you can upload details of a grant, and it'll help you write your application. It'll break out what the requirements are. Um, it's actually, it's a, it's a really interesting piece of software. Um, I'm nerdy, so I actually looked at the source code for it.
Do we, do we, do we use that at all? Not yet?
No, it's not in general, it's not in general release. So they're in the process of releasing it right now.
Okay.
Um, but it could, it could really help secure, uh, more federal funding. It's, um, the, if it, if it's released, um, if federal funding is released. Uh, the purpose of this application is to increase the volume and quality, the quality and quantity of grant applications at the federal level. Um, and we had a lot of questions after we got out of this, after we got out of this session. The, um, uh, mostly about how our town goes about applying for grants. So we were wondering what the town process was for identifying and applying for grants, um, what the coordination is. Is there any central coordination? Um, the big question, of course, is being, are we leaving any money on the table? Um, could GrantWell work for us? And of course, the big question is, what's the future of, what's the future of federal funding? Um, I'm hoping it's a blip right now, but, but we'll see. So that's the first two, two sections. I'm gonna hand this off for, uh, Budgeting One-O-One.
Do we wanna take a moment, a beat, before we dive to, for, like-
Uh, I think we're good. We'll just ask questions as we go along here.
That's fine.
I just wanna say, on that report-
Yeah.
I'm gonna go on record saying that I think they're gonna use those findings to come back and say two-and-a-half doesn't work, and it needs to be like three-and-a-half, or it needs to go away. I think there's gonna be some recommendation like that. It just seemed like the perfect setup to rip apart two-and-a-half.
Oh, yeah.
I would agree.
For sure.
And if you look at inflation over time, you're, you're behind, I mean, you're behind. You can't keep up at two-and-a-half. Any town, not, not Melis, just anything, right?
Oh, yeah. It, it's actually a pretty good report to read. It's very short.
Yeah, Mike, pass it along to us. The one that you quoted in there?
Uh, yeah, the second one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you pass it along.
It was a good one.
Yeah.
Very, very readable.
Yep. Go ahead, Brett.
Uh, Budgeting One-O-One, the session we all, I think most of us attended. Um, here's the key takeaways. The first is not on the slide deck, which is, uh, you know, I learned most every finance committee across the towns, uh, don't, they're not all the same. And so with, in terms of responsibility and, and expectations, um, so as you consider your financial oversight, um, it's not micromanagement. It is strategic oversight. Our job is big-picture financial health and policy, not necessarily line item details. And I wanna make sure that we always hold that through. Go ahead.
Hey, can I just interject? Um, totally agree with you, and great point, because Melis should be very fortunate that we have a finance director, and in this case, Jody, Carol before, who do a lot of that work where some towns don't. I know when Jen and I and Kathy were there last year, that was my takeaway as well. It's like, some towns, the finance committee are making the actual decisions of, do we do an override or do we not? So sorry, just wanted to add that.
Um, he emphasized at the top that if you can answer what, how, and why, then you're able to build clear consensus across the town and even across, uh, departments of, of town government. Uh, most, most budget complaints from residents and even town employees come from those unclear processes, uh, not the actual numbers. And I know, um, when you have big contentious votes out there, uh, by answering these, those three questions, you're able to, um, come to, to build consensus. Data over opinions, by being able to track trends, create forecasts, monitor indicators, um, you're able to make clearer decisions. Without that data, um, decisions become about opinions instead of facts. And we all know how we feel about opinions because we have feelings about opinions. Okay, moving on. Um, what you measure is what gets attention. That was a direct quote from the presenter. Um, the metrics we track shape what the town prioritizes. That's a positive and a negative. One of the things he mentioned is that if you, uh, I think the, the metaphor was, if you tell a software designer or, or developer that, uh, you're gonna get a bonus for the most bugs that you find, well, you're gonna bake bugs into your software code so you can find those. Um, so there's positives and negatives to what you measure getting the attention it deserves. And then that leads into the, the last point, which, um, is the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association Award. Um, this is available to any town, and it's, uh, less so an award and more so recognition or accreditation for, um, uh, disciplined financial management. There are twenty-five areas of criteria, and in order to receive the award, it requires proficiency in fifteen of those. So what that led me to, and I'm not gonna read through this whole slide deck, uh, the whole, this whole slide, that is, um, but rather than, um, walking through those GFOA award criteria, it presented some key questions and suggested paths forward, um, to, to learn from the Budgeting One-O-One session about, you know, do we have a strategic plan? I understand that we do. Um, do we have formal written policies on debt reserves, capital investment and fees? All of those types of information, um, will lead into us improving how we answer the what, how, and why. And so I put it down, a few suggestions for our path forward to build transparency around long-term planning tied to measurable goals, standardized department budget submissions, so on. Um, we, you all can, can look through that at, at another time. Uh, but the bottom line from Budgeting One-O-One is that transparent and clear budgeting processes builds trust. When everyone understands the why, how, and the what, that's supposed to be what, uh, we move from confusion and criticism to informed dialogue.
All right, Mark, you're up.
Hey, you. Um, so I was the only member to attend, uh, a tale of two or three overrides. Uh, it was a really good conversation. It was more of a question-and-answer format. Uh, town administrators from Easton, Bridgewater, and Stonemont, uh, were, were key speakers. Um, and they went through their struggles with trying to pass the overrides, uh, all slightly different, uh, variety of, of, uh, different criteria. Uh, but they all failed for one, one reason or another. Um, so basically, I tried to come up with a summary of what they all had in common. Obviously, it's, um, fresh in, uh, our minds, and Melis trying to pass an override. Um, now, one thing to note is all of these were operational. Uh, they're, they're more lenient, it seems, on capital, uh, overrides, but OpEx is particularly difficult to pass. Um, based on some of the criteria that I know Eric had mentioned, state fund, uh, state funding, state aid is continuing to decline, uh, year over year. So it, it's just making it more and more difficult, and, uh, the appetite really isn't there for a lot of people to want an override. Um, so they went through some of their repercussions on the failures, um, how many people had to be laid off. A lot of them were school, police, fire, public works, town hall, uh, a wide variety of staff. Um, and, uh, this kind of details out some of the specifics, but we'll go to the next slide. Uh, some of the, some of the main takeaways that I had, uh, that they had recommended, that they would have think, uh, would have done things better, uh, were ways to improve if you want to pass an override. Um, and some of those were pretty much universal between all the town administrators, so we'd like to convey that. Uh, they recommended planning ahead. Well, basically, if an override is coming down the pipe, the earlier the better, right? To get that information out to the public, uh, to make sure that it marines well with, with the public, and they were well-informed, um, basically giving them the time to, to go through that. Uh, they also said to engage the, the community. Um, some people said that they took basically the most vocal, um, people against the override in the community, and they gave committees, uh, and they came together and they said, well, you know, here's the committee, uh, come up with a solution for the best way that effectively, if, if you're going to agree that the override is acceptable, then by default, uh, it should pass. Now, the interesting there, thing there, and someone had mentioned that, well, that was the recommendation, but all of these failed. So, whether that's a, a direct plank or that that was just, um, a byproduct, uh, is, is difficult to, to know for sure. They also touched on preference and timing. Obviously, low inflationary periods make it more beneficial, or more easily to pass overrides, uh, when things are more prosperous, uh, when, uh, town debt is paid off, um, more, more so than prior years, and there's, there's more of an opening for, uh, increasing the dead load. Uh, they had mentioned that. Another thing that I thought was interesting was universally, um, in, in almost all the towns that has, uh, spoke, mentioned Facebook having misinformation that gets, gets spread around. Um, they, what they had basically said was that residents don't really have the time available to see long proposals that, that some of the committees might. Um, so they basically go to Facebook and, you know, they see a couple of comments and they just, they run with it. Uh, so that, that can be detrimental to a lot of these initiatives where, uh, some of the residents, you know, heard something, they come into meeting, and they're not fully informed on the actual, uh, understanding of what's going on. Um, and besides that, uh, transparency, obviously, um, being, being forward with, uh, the intent of the override, and to detail of what the repercussions are if the override fails, right? Um, you know, a lot of people will vote against an override specifically for, you know, they can't afford it. The economy's bad, whatever reason they might have. Um, but to outline exactly what would happen, you know, how many people would be laid off, what departments, uh, how the class sizes would look, if it impacts the school, which many of us did. Um, one, Lloyd Williams, one six, one of the communities said that their class sizes was up to thirty-five students. I forget exactly which one, but, um, it's, it's eye-opening to see some of this.
Very much so. Anything else?
Is there another slide?
Yeah.
I think that touches on the most, most of it. Um, if anyone has any questions?
I don't think so. Good stuff. Appreciate it, Mark. Um, definitely, uh, go to the sources for information is the takeaway on that one. Uh, go ahead, Heidi.
All right. So I had Revenue and Expenditure Forecasting, multi-year financial forecasting. And instead of reading you guys a list of bullet points of basic things, advantages that multi-year forecasting provides, which everybody in this room already knows, I kind of turned this into a case study a little bit. This session was done jointly by someone from DLS and also by Al Tosti from the Town of Arlington. He is a forty-plus-year member of the Finance Committee in Arlington, spent his career in municipal finance, and just really had a lot of interesting things to talk about. So basically, the challenge Arlington faces is they have a strong school system. There was an article in The Globe a few weeks ago, looking at MCAS scores, and they're either down or level in every community across the Commonwealth except for Arlington. So a lot of families wanna move into Arlington because of the schools. The issue the town has is the, um, uh, residential tax base is fairly stagnant. They're basically built out. They don't have a lot of more new housing that they can build to increase the tax base. Um, so they need to fund the schools and- So they need to fund the schools and run the town in the face of the same budgetary constraints many towns have, without the ability to move, to build new housing. So part of their financial strategy is periodic overrides. In the last 30 years, they've done five overrides. They've all passed. The solution they implemented was to embrace rigorous multi-year financial planning for every budget cycle. They have really strict parameters around budgeting. The budget plan averages 4% to 4.5% increase per year, and every department cannot submit a budget that's more than 3.5%. The town manager ultimately owns that budget. So ultimately, if one department feels strongly that they have a huge need and they need more of a percentage increase, it's up to the town manager to bring that budget into alignment with that 4% plus or minus increase. And Al really emphasized that the town's financial health is built on collaboration. He, he also said trust and transparency across the different departments, including the school, all of the, the town departments. But that everybody has bought into this plan, so there isn't competition for funds. It's not submit for twice what you really need and hope you get half. Everybody knows they have to live within the guidelines, and there's a lot of trust around it. They also believe in providing total transparency for residents. So town meeting includes this spreadsheet that we've included in our takeouts for you guys. I know spreadsheets aren't usually very exciting, but I actually found this very readable and very easy to consume. And they have planned out the next five years. So some of the areas, I'm not going to read through this whole slide, and I've been speaking to much of this already. But again, they've put limits around budget growth for every department. They allocate a maximum of 5% of non-exempt revenues for capital investments, and that 5% has to include capital debt service that's non-exempt. So that just ensures that they're funding capital needs but not doing anything too crazy. On healthcare, the day the legislature passed legislation saying that towns could opt in to the GIC, they met and they voted in for the town to become part of the GIC. Al said, when they did that, they delayed the need for an override by eight years because of the economies of scale that GIC provides. And they have an aging employee base, so it really saved the town a lot of money. This, I thought, was very interesting. We always ask, what about ROI? What about, you know, seeing value for money invested? On the enterprise side, water and sewer, they're fully self-supporting, including any town administrative costs. Al made the joke comment that if the town manager sneezes on top of the water and sewer budget, that time is allocated to water and sewer. So I thought that was pretty interesting. Basically, by, by making it self-supporting, water and sewers not placing demands on the operational budget, maybe even returning money to the op budget if they have, you know, if they make over and above. Free cash, they take 50% of free cash on a 10-year average that's state-certified and devote that to operations. The other 50% is retained as a reserve. And then for pension funding discipline, they're actually funding 18 to 19 million a year into their pension fund. They're contributing 5.5% annually, and they expect to be fully funded by 2040. So for a town with the constraints they have of no new housing stock, basically, I thought they had done a lot of great things to contain costs but make sure they're not shorting the town. Interesting as well, when it comes to the school, they've just finished a $300 million new school. They, that got voted in just before COVID, and the contractor that they contracted with bought all of the supplies he needed before COVID. So that $300 million project actually came in a little below budget. Another capital project they had was for DPW. That building has been a nightmare because it started after COVID. So they've had all the inflationary things, tariffs, whatever, to deal with. So anyway, I just thought this was a very interesting look into what one town is doing. And then I have a bunch of questions, too. Some of them are similar to the questions Brett's raised, and Eric, and Mark. What we've done is we've created a consolidated document with all the questions in it. And Mike has kindly agreed to look at that document in his copious spare time and provide some text answers back to us. And then if we still have clarifying questions, we'll come back with those questions. But I dove into the annual report, actually, this afternoon and discovered we do have a five-year forecasted budget.
We do.
So some of the questions we can answer ourselves by just looking at some of the resources on the town website. But I think the day was awesome. I think we all felt that way. And I felt like we were drinking from a fire hose, as one of us put it. I think it was Eric.
Well, I appreciate everybody going and learning and sharing all the different information that you learned during that process. I think, you know, when you look at like an Arlington or, and compare it to a Milis or other towns out in the west of Mass, that might be even more rural, you have to look to see what those metrics are, kind of like what you were referring to the study before. And everyone has a, a different metrics in terms of how they manage it. So the question is, what are those metrics for us? And can they be improved? Or maybe they are as good as they can be, maybe they're efficient. But the landscape's always changing, as we're seeing. So it's, it's good to compare and contrast that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We also created a master folder with all of the slides, the presentation materials in it.
Great.
And this slide deck is in it, too. And we'll share that out with the whole committee so that in your spare time, when you're getting ready for bed at night and you need some good bedtime reading, you can look at that.
That's what we tell clients. They can read a prospectus as they go to bed as well. Okay, I appreciate all that. I'm going to move on in the agenda here. Bill's payable. So we have two bills that need to be signed off here. Can I get a motion to approve? Yeah. Take a motion to approve these?
A motion to approve.
Thank you, Jen. Second? All right, there we go. All right. Exactly. So the first one is regarding printing and postage for the report. That was about $6,000. Falls in line. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The second one is to the fee of $65 for each of you to attend that conference, totaling $260. Can I get a motion?
Moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 15th, 2025 meeting, as submitted.
Thank you, Brett. Do I have a second? Thank you. There's been a motion and second to approve the Milis Finance Committee meeting minutes from October 15th of 2025, as written. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you.
I'm abstaining because I was not here.
Thank you.
But I watched the recording, so I can vote on that basis.
So that's a seven to one, seven, four, one abstention, Deirdre. Thank you. Any old business? Do I have one more? No, I think that's it. Any older, new business? Only thing I'll say is we'll meet at the classroom at the high school. So when you walk in, for, this is for town meeting on Monday. So town meeting's at 7:30. We don't have any outstanding items right now. So show up, 7 o'clock or shortly thereafter. We can discuss any last-minute items. So if you go into the high school where the office is, take a right, go down that hallway, pretty much all the way before you, it moves around. But on the right-hand side, there's an empty classroom we always go into.
She puts the number down.
Yeah, actually, she does. I don't, uh...
Usually does. She'll, she'll...
Yeah, room 104.
Room 104.
Yep, good job, Deirdre. Thank you. Any board or committee liaison updates? Probably nothing?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Move to adjourn. Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Deirdre.
Thanks, Mark.